Christopher Town Council, order. We will observe a moment of reflection of the pledge of allegiance. But I ask everyone to rise and have Councilman Sam Bishop lead us in place.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to add in a discussion item, item C, and it'd be a discussion, a closed session for discussion of attorney services.
Okay.
Second half.
Got a motion in the second. Any discussion? Madam Court?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schewalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you. Do you have the burger on yet? Is your son the code? Quote?
I don't know. I don't think we needed a code for that. I think all we need is the legal code for closed session and detailing what we're going to go into.
You have to cite the code section, thirty-seven-eleven-eight-one.
From, it's on the closed session. You know that, right?
Yes, sir.
You can provide it for me when we get to it.
Which closed session, no, no, I'm sorry.
I just made a motion to go into closed session, council votes voted in, in attorney services.
Right.
Okay. Is that fine?
Yeah, you just have to name the statute, and the statute is two-point-two-thirty-seven-eleven-eight-one.
There you go.
Two-point.
I'll proceed to our party with the code.
Very good. Public hearings, we have an ordinance to amend Chapter eighteen, Finance and Taxation, Article One, in general, to enact Section eighteen-point-three, to allow the clerk of the court to collect a five-dollar fee for criminal and traffic cases in order to solely fund an electronic summons system pursuant to Code of Virginia, Section seventeen-point-one-dash-two-seven-nine-one. Is there anyone here to address this issue? Hearing, no one. We will close the public hearing under consent agenda. We have council meeting minutes of July the twenty-fifth. Scheduled public hearing of July twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen, for a conditional use permit for Jeff and Liz Dixon, family, single-family residential at one hundred South Franklin Street. Scheduled public hearing August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, for an ordinance to amend Chapter twelve, Business Regulations, for the Christopher Town Code by enacting Article three, Massage Establishments. Scheduled public hearing August thirteenth, two thousand and nineteen, for an ordinance to amend Chapter twenty-two, Miscellaneous Offenses of the Town of Christiansburg by enacting Section twenty-two-dash-ten, prostitution. Approval of professional services engineering contract with Matt and Craig Inc. for the amount of one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty dollars for design of Hickok Street Storm Drainage Improvements. Approval of professional services engineering contract with Matt and Craig Incorporated in the amount of seventy-nine-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for design to the Christiansburg Industrial Park Stormwater Upgrade Project. Approval of professional services engineering contract with Romo, Kepler, and Call, L.L.P., in the amount of three-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-six dollars for design of Reno Street, Tower Road, and Hampton Boulevard Intersection Improvements. Approval of Addendum two to Contract P.W. eighteen-dash-oh-two-oh with Cardenoe in the amount of fifty-thousand dollars for Phase Three of the Facility Assessment Services. May I make a motion to approve a consent agenda as presented?
I second it.
Motion in the second. Discussion. Madam Court?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sachs?
Aye.
Councilman Schewalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That is six oh, thank you. Other introductions and presentations tonight, we were honored to have Executive Director of New River Valley Community College Education Foundation, Angie Covey, and Christopher Council Class of two thousand and eighteen ACE participant Hannah Close to present on the Access to Community College Education ACE Program. Angie?
Okay. Thank you, Council. I really appreciate this opportunity just to kind of give you an update of what's been going on for the past year with the ACE Program in Montgomery County. As you well know, we're getting ready to start our second year in Montgomery County. In addition to that, we're starting our fifth year in Giles County, our third year in Radford, our third year in Floyd, and Pulaski County's Board of Supervisors just announced that they're going to be initiating the ACE Program as well to begin in two thousand and twenty. So we will have our full service region participating, which means every single high school graduate in the entire New River Valley has the opportunity to participate in the ACE Program. So I think you know a lot about the nuts and bolts of the program because you've all heard me speak about it before, but to just give you a little background on what happened last year, we had a hundred and forty students participate. So with a hundred and forty students, that's over eleven thousand hours of community service that was given back to Montgomery County. If you kind of look at those numbers and just give a nine-dollar-an-hour minimum wage type of position, that's a hundred thousand dollars that was given back. So I think that's very significant that these young people are participating in community service within our locality. Our estimated cost for year one was three hundred thousand, and we had two hundred and fifty thousand from the locality, and then each of our towns contributed twenty-five, which gave us the three hundred. Our budget came in at just around four hundred thousand. We weren't really surprised at that because we knew that we could fundraise for the additional funding that was needed, and we were able to do that very easily. And we want to do that. We want fundraising to be a part of the program, not a hundred percent localities. And the reason for that is when we talk to these young people, because that's part of the program, is the message that we're sharing with the young people in our community, and we're saying that the localities have stepped up, that the individuals within the community, and that the business and industries have stepped up to make this happen. So it's a partnership of a lot of people in the county, not just the localities, and it's important for the young people to understand that. With that total package of a hundred and forty students, sixty-one of those students were from Christiansburg High School, so I think that's a significant number for you folks. With that number of sixty-one students, it was just under two hundred thousand was the total cost. So Christiansburg is our largest high school, so we're going to have the most students coming from that locality. In addition to that, just as a reminder, we do have career coaches in all four of our high schools in Montgomery County. So at Christiansburg High School, we have a person that's on New Rivers payroll, so when they go to work every day, they go to Christiansburg High School. And their job at Christiansburg High School is to make sure that all of these students understand that whole process, how to apply for college, how to do your financial aid application. So we're putting a lot of investment in this outside of just the tuition cost. And if a student approaches our career coach and they say, "I want to go to Radford," or "I want to go to Tech," or "I want to go to Reno College," our career coach will help the student with whatever pathway they want to take. We're not just in there to make sure they go to New River, because if they have the resources and the scholarship opportunity to go to other schools, at the end of the day, that's what we want. We want an educated community. So that part has been working out very, very well. Another number that I think would be significant to you is that we saw a thirty-four percent increase in the number of students that came to New River from Christiansburg High School last year. That percentage increase, the way I looked at that is I took a three-year rolling average from the class of two thousand and seventeen, sixteen, and fifteen, and averaged that number to get a more accurate increase, but it was around thirty-four percent. So I think that's a good number. A significant number was Eastmont. It was closer to eighty percent of those students. And when you look at the free or reduced lunch numbers in your four high schools, you'll see the significantly higher free or reduced lunch numbers at Eastmont, so we feel like we're really making a powerful impact there of making sure that those young people know that college is within reach. I don't have a lot of data on the success of students in Montgomery County because we're brand new, but in Giles County, I can say that overall, the GPA of the ACE students are half a point to a full point higher, and that's significant in your own work of four points. That's a pretty significant increase. Our retention rate with the ACE students in Giles County has been around forty percent higher, another significant number, and our graduation rate has been around fifteen percent higher. And what we're seeing with these young people is they feel like there's a group of people, and that's why the whole community has to be behind this. In Giles County, these kids know that there's accountability. They know that in Montgomery County, too, because we're following up with these young people, but they understand if you say the ACE word in Giles County, everybody knows what you're talking about. And they know that there is a two-point-five GPA requirement, that if they're not successful in the course, that they have to pay it back, and they know that we can track them down and make sure that they do that. But we're also looking for opportunities for these students to be successful, and at the end of the day, we're seeing that that's happening. Also, before I hand it over to our student, I would like to thank Mayor Barber. He was significant in creating an opportunity for the New River Valley to receive a ten-thousand-dollar contribution from the Bud Foster Lunch Pail Defense Fund, and he's on that foundation, and I think that we're hoping that that's going to continue. It's a great fit for what they're trying to do, so we appreciate that very much, Mayor Barber. And then another thing that I would like to mention for just a moment is Chief Sisson. This program really started moving in Montgomery County because of the law enforcement within our community, because they were working with an organization, as you well know, the Dialogue on Race, and they were looking for opportunities to create a pipeline for students within the high schools to be able to enter law enforcement, and we were really wanting to focus on minority students with that pathway. So that's when the Books and Badges started. And as a result of Books and Badges, it's fully developed into the ACE Program. So we still have a Books and Badges pathway, but what that basically is, is an ACE student who wants to go into law enforcement. So the two chiefs and the sheriff meet with those students and provide community service opportunities for them to shadow someone with their law enforcement. As you well know, it's a little difficult to hire officers sometimes, so this gives them, these young people, a good opportunity to kind of see that world and decide that they have a passion for that, and that's something they want to do. So thank you, Chief Sisson. Now, my favorite part, you listen to me all day, but it's not really a big deal, when you get to hear, yes, sir?
You know, I thought before the meeting, you explained to me about how the five-k race in Giles and New Orleans, Montgomery County?
Yes.
Could you go ahead? I thought some really impressive statistics.
Absolutely. In Giles County, they've been doing something called the Buddy Ace Race, and it has all those hurdles and obstacles and great stuff that you have to run through. Not last year because it conflicted with a tech football game, but the year before it did not. This upcoming year, it will not again, but they had five hundred racers, or six hundred racers, excuse me, and it was fifty dollars a registration fee. So they've been able to do a phenomenal event. Back in April, we had a Race for ACE in Montgomery County, and it was our very first time doing an event like this. Montgomery County schools were very supportive in helping us get that going. Brian Kits with Blacksburg High School helped us use the track there, and we raised somewhere between twelve to fifteen thousand off of that race, so that was a significant contribution to the ACE Program there. So now I have Hannah Close, and it's just always phenomenal to get to hear a student talk about the program because that's where you really see the passion behind it and you see the benefit. Hannah graduated from Christiansburg High School, two thousand and eighteen, so she has finished her first year as an ACE student, and I didn't realize this until just a moment ago, but she brought her boyfriend with her, who is Skylar's friend, if you display, and I'm not going to put you on the spot, but he's a two thousand and nineteen graduate of Christiansburg High School, and he's enrolled in the ACE Program and will be attending New River this fall with the support of you folks in Montgomery County. So Hannah, if you'd like to come up and share a little bit about your experiences in the ACE Program.
Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world. That's a quote by Nelson Mandela. Good evening. As Ms. Covey said, my name is Hannah Close. I've been asked to speak with you all about my personal experience with the ACE Program. I'll be talking to you about three things tonight. First will be how this ACE Program has been beneficial personally to me. Second will be about my community service, and third will be about my future education. As Ms. Covey said, I am a two thousand and eighteen Christiansburg High School graduate, and I spent the last year at New River Community College. Ms. Covey has asked me to speak at a few different events over the past few months, and I almost turned her down on the offer. I am not a very confident public speaker, and the thought of speaking in front of people terrifies me. But as I began to think about it, I came to the realization that if my community can pull together and pay for me to go to college tuition-free, then I owe it to them to show them how beneficial it can be. I come from a family of six. I have three sisters, which makes it difficult for my parents to be able to afford college for all four of us. When I first heard about the ACE Program, I jumped at the opportunity. I was determined to go to college for as little as possible so that my parents could save their money for my younger sisters. I was applied, I applied and was accepted, and so I got to go tuition-free. All I had to do was eighty hours of community service. I only had to pay for my books, which thankfully I had a savings account to help pay for. When I graduated in two thousand and eighteen, I got to graduate with forty-six college credit hours under my belt. I had a head start on my college education due to our dual enrollment programs, this meaning I only needed twenty hours, or twenty credit hours to finish my associate's degree. So I only needed one year of the ACE, giving my second year open to somebody else. Volunteer work is nothing new to me. I spent the past seven years working and volunteering at Winter Frost Farm, which is a local horse rescue. There I have averaged over ten thousand hours of volunteer work. So when I heard I only needed eighty hours of community service, I figured it'd be a piece of cake. I did my volunteer work over the summer of two thousand and eighteen with my best friend, Abby. She also graduated from Christiansburg High School. We were glad to give back to the school that gave us our education in the first place. We spent two forty-hour work weeks working closely, doing odds-and-end jobs with our front office ladies, our principals, and our janitorial staff. We became expert wallkeepers, excellent room organizers, and so much more. It was astonishing to see all the work that goes in to prepare for a new school year. And there is something about working very closely with our principals and front office ladies, it was just astonishing to get to know them on a deeper level and really deepen my level of respect for them. My volunteer hours there reminded me that we're all here on this earth to help one another by working together and supporting each other to make a better and brighter future for everyone. ACE gave me my basic education for free. I'll use this associate's degree as a stepping stone towards the bettering of my future. In my one year at New River Community College, I was able to take a public speaking class. While it didn't completely get rid of my nerves, my professor was able to teach me how to adequately create a speech and present a speech to you all so that I can do it correctly tonight. This is just one of the experiences that I'm grateful for from going to New River Community College. My time at New River has helped me narrow down my path that I want to go down. I'm still not a hundred percent sure where I'm going to go in life. I know that I will be pursuing a degree in agriculture. I have a special interest in livestock and horses, so I'll probably become some sort of large animal nutritionist or livestock farm manager. And I'm looking to pursue my degree here locally at Virginia Tech. They have a phenomenal animal science program, and the agriculture needs around here are very great, so I could probably find a good job around here, too, stay local. So today I've talked with you all about my personal experience with my personal benefits, the benefits of my community service, and my future education plans. Martin Luther King Jr. once said, "If I cannot do great things, I can do small things in a great way." The ACE Program of Montgomery County may not change the world, but it has and will continue to change the worlds of each and every participant who has and will participate in this program. I hope I've shown you all how beneficial and essential this program can be to Montgomery County. Thank you for your time and attention.
Hannah, you need to tell your public speaking professor that you're doing a job. And you'll always be nervous. The minute you're not nervous, it means you don't care.
Can I make one other comment?
Certainly.
Ms. Covey, I've heard her give this talk before, and she herself is a first-generation college graduate herself, so.
New River.
In New River. And so that was a fantastic speech, but we can see the benefits of that. And just, Close, thanks for taking time to come, and my recommendation to your boyfriend is you better hold on to her.
Any other comments?
Economic comment, please.
Yeah, this ACE is probably the best thing I have ever seen with college or school in itself. The ACE Program is going to change this whole, I mean, the town of Christiansburg, Montgomery County, Giles County, Blacksburg, and Pulaski. I've been talking to them for a while about getting into it, and they had their own stuff, T Y stuff, and they got into it. This will change the community for everybody around here. These young adults are going to get their education, which will help them to get employment, good employment, which helps build houses that can afford homes, and it's just going to help the whole place really. Because it's already the best place to live, and this is going to make it even one notch higher. Great job, folks. Great job. Great speech, too, by the way.
Thank you.
Citizens' comments is where we open the floor to citizens who'd like to bring something to the attention of the council and the mayor. I ask that you come to the podium, give your name and address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone here to address council? Hearing, no one closes. Citizens' comments on committee reports. Ms. Sachs?
Actually, I was unable to attend the last central business meeting, so I'd like to defer to Mr. Bishop for an update.
During our central business meeting, we discussed something. Christopher and D.C.I. has applied for a Virginia Tourism Rally Grant in the amount of three thousand dollars. This grant can be used for community projects, far as like the Love Sign, Art Project, and so forth, downtown and Cambria Section. The drawback with this program is it takes six months with the approval denied, but hopefully with the backing of D.C.I. and Christiansburg, it will be approved for that. We're also looking at the new Love Sign, and we have nerded down to, what we're going to use, what is it, old barn wood, and with how like the scenery, the mountains behind and so forth. Our next step is to find out, try to find someone locally to build that sign, because we have looked at maybe legal scouts, ACE Program students, and our high school students. So that's definitely what we're looking at, to try to get it done for a cheaper and use local resources. And we're still working on the aquatic sign, far as replacing the current sign with something more up-to-date. And I think we're going to use more leaning towards making like fish scales on that sign to need to do that. And also, as you noticed, the facade grant is now going on. There's two buildings, I know in Cambria that's using it, is the electrical supply and think the other building's called the Palmer Building, is a gray building. I know last week they had started painting the Palmer Building. So right now, two out of, what was it, six? Six people have started using the facade grant. We're also looking at trying to come up with some type of sign, symbol, something to represent the five branches of the military to put up at the square downtown. At one time, it's going to put it on the sidewalk, then we kind of back try to set, you know, it's going to get a lot of war and terror, so we're now kind of looking at doing it another way, far as maybe kind of some type of standing-up sign. So that's still in the works. Yeah, let's see. And that's it. That's it.
Thank you. There was one thing that our First Lady, Birlene Barber, had brought up, and I'd like to ask the mayor to possibly discuss the details of it and see if we have councils blessing to move forward with a version of the idea.
This all came about watching her favorite show, which is "Garden of the Pit Masters." And we were sitting on the deck, and she said, "You know what the town needs is a chili cook-off." And so, you know, I said, "Well, you know, we've thought about it and not taken a lot of traction to it." And we got to thinking, and I came down to, came down to the central business meeting, and I reviewed it with Mr. Bishop and Mr. Wingfield, Mr. Warren, Chief Hanks, and Cassie Jenkins and some of them, and we kind of kicked it around. What we're trying to, we're trying to look at is possibly a first responders chili cook-off contest where we would have the local first responders throughout the county that would have an interest in coming to compete. It's kind of a bragging rights. I assume we do the judging, and this is all very premature, it's in the line box with the number on it when you judge that one. And thought about prize money, if we could, if we could come up with a thousand dollars, five hundred for first, three hundred for second, and two hundred for third, or something in that general area. I talked with Charlie White Scarver Saturday downtown, and Charlie is a state-certified chili judge, and he has lots of experience in these things. He has an interest, if council would like to pursue this. We're looking at, I talked to Terry at the Aquatic Center, and, you know, they do this sink-the-battleship first responders thing on Saturday. They'd been doing it in the winter, in December, and I think she would like to move it to April the seventeenth, which would be a good day if we wanted to have like a first responders chili cook-off and then kind of drum up business to the, to the sink-the-battleship and things like that. So it's, this idea is in its infancy, and if council has an interest in it, you know, I'd like to get with central business and special events to pursue it. I know we have to go through the Health Department. A lot of things have changed, but just to see if it's feasible.
I recommend we actually make it bigger, instead of just the first responders locally, make it into a amateur chili cook-off to bring in more people. I mean, these items, especially if it's going to be sponsored by the town, it should be more of a community builder.
I would like to do that at some point. I would like to try first responders first, just to see how this thing comes off. Again, it's whatever council says, let's do.
But I think we can always discuss the details in central business and get input just for today, perhaps, just if the idea is good enough to pursue.
I think the key is with any item like this is the number of people cooking. So I think my recommendation would be to reach out to all the departments locally and see who will be available at the court. I'd be available.
Chief Hanks has offered to take that lead at the Regional Firefighters Association meeting and opening up, and I think Joe would be interested in talking to the rescue, and of course, police would be involved in it. But we're not just, obviously, we're not talking Christiansburg only, we're going to open it up to the New River Valley as much as we can for the first responders type thing. So if council sees fit, then, Chris, if you'd like to put up with me for a little while and be in the committee together?
Yeah, I think that's great.
You know, I had anything to eat tonight, can we start tonight?
Harry, does that look like you're starving?
Hey, hey, you're right.
Can we go ahead and request to add that to the agenda for the next central business?
Yes. Do you have any English, Tom?
Yeah. I want to bring out the point here, this is going to be a big month for the Aquatic Center. They have three, three large needs coming out of July twelfth to- They have three large meets coming up July 12th, July 19th, and July 25th. The meet on the 12th, there are going to be 1,000 swimmers, and we're bringing all their parents with them. And then on the 19th, another 1,000 swimmers are going to be coming in. And on the 25th, there are going to be 600 swimmers, and they anticipate on the 25th, there are going to be around 1500 spectators. So if you have never seen the swim meet at the Aquatic Center, it's unbelievable how they handle it, and I guess we're going to make sure all the restaurants and hotels know that this is coming. The other thing I wanted to bring out was the Continental Divide, and I was hoping that Melissa would be here, but maybe, as everybody saw this in the paper the other day, they have, Casey has put in a black line or a blue line over there by the donut shop, because Christiansburg is right on the Continental Divide, and they're marking that, and they have a little sign posted, we're talking about it. I thought that was very clever. Is there anything I've missed?
Nope, there's a sign, and I think they're planning on putting literature up eventually, a box that people can revive and recreate and learn more.
So there you have a donut and see the sign, and don't leave it. Now, the other thing I would like to bring out, this is sort of unusual for a councilman to say that he made a mistake, but I'm going to do that right now. Last winter, we talked at Great Lakes about getting a stage for the town of Christiansburg. And the stage is quite expensive. And I said, "I don't think we need to do that," you know? "It's a lot of money, and we're just wasting it." I've used it a couple times. And I've got out of it a usual, okay? But then on the 4th of July, if, hopefully, most of you were there, that stage is really impressive. It really is, and it really makes Christiansburg look good. And I've heard that another entity wants to maybe rent the stage, and Charlie told me that it's good maybe to have it rented out every couple of weeks just to get it in going. So I really think, I back up here, and I think it's good that what we've done there, and it really, I thought, made the 4th of July even nicer for us, and the bands were great, too. That's all I have.
Mr. Stipes?
Short report, as you know, I served you on the Virginia Tech Montgomery Executive Airport Board, and just a couple, we kept you posted on the airport runway extension and so forth, but a couple interesting facts that I'm going to have, I'm going to ask Michael Satanine to come in through later in the fall to discuss, you know, this increased assessment that we're looking for next year. But two facts that are very interesting, and get to the mission of the airport to move into a more corporate service line. Right now, the Roanoke Airport, they call them operations, and operation is either a touchdown or a takeoff and so forth, but in the Roanoke Airport, 60% of the volume of their operations are flight training oriented. Our airport here is only 18%, which is pretty, that's pretty important, because it means that most of the flights that are coming in and out are directly related to business in our area, you know, for the university and for our localities. But that's a pretty, one-third of what Roanoke is, so even though the volume is, I'm sure in Roanoke is much higher, 60% of their touchdown and takeoffs are related to flight training, and it's not so much with our airport, it's only 18%. And right now, some data we're going to be tracking for the next, for the coming years as the airport's extended, is right now, there's roughly 75% of the operations are related to propeller-based planes, 25% are jet aircraft, jet-based aircraft, those are my folksy terms, they have some more, you know, complicated terms for that, but it's basically a 75-25 split. And we're really wanting to see the mission accomplished by raising that jet, and the larger jets, and more corporate executive-type focus to complement what we're already have with our other airport in New River, which is more civil, civil, if anybody, some interesting facts for you to consider and what we'll be looking at in the future.
I have nothing. Mr. Bishop, we got you. Stipes?
Yes, sir. See, this past time, the planning commission did not meet, or the recreation commission did not meet either, but the planning commission is getting close to interviewing some applicants to add to the planning commission, and do we need to set that up, or?
Well, the council has the packets tonight, and normally, I believe, in the past, we have preserved the right to interview as a council.
Yes.
You certainly have the right to review and recommend.
Yeah.
What we'll look at.
Yeah, but we are going to put it here soon, right? I mean, are we going to interview them, or?
Well, I'd like, those council members have not reviewed yet, to at least take this weekend at the next meeting, we can discuss what point and how we want to do this.
Okay, okay.
Terry, how many openings are there versus?
Well, right now, on there, we only have, what is it, eight people on there right now?
Eight, and one is on leave of absence. We like to keep around 11.
Yeah.
And we had three applications this time.
Yeah, the code, well, the Virginia code said you could have up to 15, but we don't want that many, you know?
Yeah, okay.
So what people need to discuss, how to proceed, whether we interview, or is this a point?
Well, I mean, that's, yeah, if you want to look at the things that we'll talk about at the next meeting, I mean, we have in the past appointed without interview. We have in the past interviewed.
Yeah, we've interviewed ones I've been involved with.
Yeah, I believe, I've been here for 10 years, I don't think we interviewed. I think we appointed, people are already on it.
We have appointed some when we had three openings and three applications, is that correct?
That's correct, although it probably has been a while, it's probably been about a decade.
Well, let's set up some interviews for this stuff.
Yeah, I would rather just stay consistent, interview as well. One evening.
You can do that.
Would you be interested in doing that potentially before the next council meeting, two weeks from now? You have three applicants.
What's the date?
That'd be the 23rd.
The next meeting, Eric, next meeting is the 23rd?
Yes.
Would you want to do it sometime prior to that, or?
That's up to council, you could do it following Tuesday if you like.
Oh, if you can't do it next Tuesday, I can do it maybe the night before, not the 22nd.
I think the idea of having it before council meeting is good, to be your 5:30, yes, and discuss it.
Do you want to tell them next morning?
What's that?
Yeah, tell them for the next council meeting.
No, I have a daughter that has a major, it's a season-ending swim meet. I don't think I miss that.
Monday night, prior to council, I mean, Monday night before council?
22nd.
22nd. It's closed interview session, anyone?
You have a planning commission meeting that night or not? I'd have to check, I don't know.
No, we do not.
No, okay, good, yeah, be good.
Is it reasonable?
Yeah, can we start at 5:30, just schedule 30-minute seconds?
Sure.
And ask the...
Up to 30-minute seconds, yeah, that would be...
On 22nd, right?
And then have them show up a little bit early in case we have issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Monday, the 22nd, 5:30. Will you contact, will you, you want Will to contact?
One of us will reach out.
Very good.
Okay.
Okay. Under discussions by mayor and council, consideration of a request for town support to Go Virginia Grant application by Virginia Tech Foundation, and I believe we have John Dooley here tonight to discuss this with us, is that, was that your plan, Randy?
Correct.
Okay, John?
Thank you, sir. Randy, if you want to say anything?
I guess I'll let you go first. I'll learn a little more about blockchain than others.
Following the lead of our earlier speaker, is I'm very nervous, okay, so, before this group. Mr. Mayor and members of the town council, let me say thank you again for receiving this evening to talk about this opportunity, at least of what we believe to be an opportunity, that we are trying to engage the town of Christiansburg, town of Blacksburg, Montgomery County, Puyallaski County, the city of Roanoke, and Roanoke County, in providing the necessary matching resources for us to move forward with a Go Virginia Grant. As you recall, I came and presented to this group back in January about Go Virginia, and we're wanting to make sure that we can leverage these important state assets, okay, for the benefit of this region as best we can. In your packet of information in preparation of today's meeting is the executive summary of the proposal that we are putting together. Let me say upfront, you know, my day bid, okay, my day job is looking at ways in which we can make strategic investments that benefit Virginia Tech. I'm also very interested and very committed to finding ways in which we can make strategic investments that advance the economic well-being of this region. And there's a group of us that believe that we may have a very unique window of opportunity that has been brought to us through a very unusual resource, okay, that exists in the Virginia Tech Corporate Research Center, a company that is known as Block One, okay? And if you're not familiar with Block One, Block One is one of the national, international leaders as it relates to the development and advancement, okay, of blockchain technology. Now, please don't ask me to go into much detail about what blockchain technology is, because that is well beyond, that platform is well beyond my understanding. I told your town manager, if any of those questions came up tonight, I'm referring those to the mayor, okay, let him answer those questions. But I do believe that you're aware it is a platform of the use of computer engineering and computer sciences, okay, that will, okay, connect, that's the chain piece, okay, data points across a distributed system globally, okay? And so that is, that's the work that Block One does, okay, as does several other companies, okay, in this region, in Blacksburg and in the Roanoke Valley. It's an emerging technology that, quite frankly, I don't believe any of us truly understand what the potential might be, okay? But it, there are those who believe that it very much cutting-edge and has potential, a significant potential, as it relates to growth for the local region. Block One, okay, again, if you look at the story of Block One, it has emerged, okay, over the last, really, over the last three years, and to being a fairly, very dynamic company in the Corporate Research Center. It, one of the obstacles that they are dealing with, okay, is being able to recruit talent, okay, to support their growth. They project a significant growth trajectory over the coming years. And so what we are doing, okay, is what we have before you, is a proposal that we would like to take to the regional council, the executive summary of the proposal, that will help develop, okay, talent, okay, that will support this emerging technology growth area. And so we have engaged the Computer Science Department of Virginia Tech, we've engaged the Valley's Innovation Council, and are coming to you with this proposal to where we will be establishing what we hope will be a global hub, okay, as it relates to talent development for the blockchain technology adaptation in various venues. And so our proposal that we hope to take to the Go Virginia Regional Council is just short of a half million dollars. We, the foundation, okay, is putting forward nearly 100, well, we're putting forward $190,000 to support this initiative, and we are asking local governments to corporately come up with $60,000, and our specific request to you is $6,000, okay, to support that, and that $6,000 would be spread over two years. And as I said, we have the information for you, be glad to entertain any questions that you may have. As I said, I can't get too deep in the weeds as it relates to the details of the technology itself, I just know that it's bringing job growth to this region, and we want to leverage that. So, Mr. Mayor, be glad to entertain any questions.
You lost me a good evening.
What's that?
You lost me a good evening. Now, Randy, as our town manager has explained a little bit to me, and it is, it is a very technical field.
Oh, it's...
And I think that we want to understand the job market, and the salaries are pretty much above average, pretty well above average.
Yep. I've heard a presentation on this at the Economic Development Commission, and I don't recall the particulars, but I do, I do know that Dr. Dooley is very focused on high returns of investment, because the foundation is tight as a tree bark in the late summer when they make investments, and I remember the presentation well, and our area is ramping up, but we're still behind the Golden Crescent, we're still behind Northern Virginia, and that's not bad, or, I mean, we can do better, and they're focusing their guns on this. And an interesting side note to blockchain, I didn't know you were going to speak about that this evening, but the founder of blockchain is a major investor in the revamping of our marketplace, I don't know.
Block One?
Or Block One, yeah, sorry, but I do remember that as well. So there's already some roots emerging there with that particular thing, so, but I have a lot of confidence in Dr. Dooley and his ability to zero in on high returns on investment, and I think the amount requested for the potential return on that is very, very reasonable for us, so I'll go on record with that. I wanted to make also that note that there's also, that money's already starting to recirculate in our area.
If there is a company out there, Block One you mentioned in the Corporate Research Center, what is their investment, as this will mostly seem to benefit them?
Part of the 190 that's represented, okay, is our match, has been donated by Block One, okay?
What about Amazon? Is some of this created because Amazon has come to the state? And second all, is Amazon maybe a contributor, or a potential contributor?
What we envision is, this is a prototype that we want to test, okay? If we are successful as we would like to believe that we can be with this prototype, is that we would grow this and then go forward with a state proposal for the, at the state level of Go Virginia, then it could possibly have a relationship to what we're going to be doing in Northern Virginia with Amazon. But this right now, we want to be locally focused, okay? We want to grow, okay, leverage the asset that we have here locally and grow that here locally. There's a great need right now for the talent that we're proposing we will develop here. Can I answer your question?
Yeah, you know, I think I've heard that there's something like 40,000 jobs are available in technology, and I think a lot of these, this goes back to Neuter, you don't need a four-year degree to do it, but to get these people into that.
Yeah. This is, okay, the blockchain technology is a pretty sophisticated technology that's going to require, okay, primarily a college degree, but what we are, what we're looking at here, if you've read the information, is that we're also looking at at least providing some basis of education for individuals who are in fields outside of computer engineering and computer science, to give them some of the basic skill sets in context of their discipline, okay, that could help them utilize and adapt the technology in, let's say, in banking and in business. Any other questions? I hope that you will give serious consideration to our request, it's a relatively modest request, I do believe the ROI, the return on investment, can be, okay, very significant for this entire region.
Will this be a yearly amount?
Now, this is a one-time ask, okay? Okay, $6,000 in total, $3,000 for the current fiscal year, $3,000 for next fiscal year. That's what we're asking.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the request for town support for a Go Virginia Grant. grant application by the Virginia Tech Foundation.
I second that.
Got a motion in a second, discussion. Madam Park?
Yes, sir. Councilman Bishop?
Aye.
Councilman Collins?
Aye.
Councilman Hubbard?
Aye.
Councilwoman Sacks?
Aye.
Councilman Showalter?
Aye.
Councilman Stipes?
Aye.
That's exciting. Thank you very much. John, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, council members, and again, thank you for what you do. I always enjoy coming to your council meetings. I always learn something. The thing that I learned tonight, one of the things I learned tonight is I've got to learn how that I, how do you become a certified chili judge?
Really?
Stakes, I don't know. He does.
I think I have enough experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Under discussion of Mayor and Council, section B policies and procedures for elected officials consultation with legal counsel.
Are we moving this to the C?
Do I?
Area? Is this one moving in with the C, the new?
It could. It's on the, it was on the, it was, the closed session was listed as C. So if you want to table this and move on.
I would, I would recommend, and this is, I would recommend that the policies and procedures for elected officials' consultation with legal counsel be discussed in open session, and that is basically, and I didn't ask for this to be on the agenda, but looking at it, I think, I think it's important for us to have some policies as a council, some rules, I guess, or some policies for what is our policy for us as elected officials consulting with legal counsel. Again, I didn't put this on here, but I would move this to the closed session. I would keep this open and maybe just, and I don't know if it asked for it to be on there, but honestly, but if it is on there, I would, I would invite, or I would say to keep it on here and maybe have a discussion about should we have rules, should we have policies for us to consult with legal counsel.
I don't think there's anything that I'm aware of that is on the, in the minutes that does, that does not allow a member of council to consult with the attorneys. I'm not aware of anything. I do know that we, that we have had issues in the past, but that's, I don't, it's been 10 or 12 years. I think as long as it's unreasonable, but then, I guess the question is, what's the reporting back?
If you, and that's that second, that's the other foot, we follow the, what are the policies and then what are the, what are the protocols, I guess, or expectations for, for sharing that with other council members?
I guess that, I've seen several emails during the last month that my name was connected with talking to council, and I did, I was just up here one, one Wednesday, and I just sat down and I was going by, and he was sitting there, and I did have a question, and I, I am sorry to tell you, but I cannot remember what it was, and it was not that big of a thing. And then we just chit-chatted for a few minutes, and then I left. And it was, at the time, I just thought it was just a way to, for me just to have a little conversation with council every once in a while, just so they knew me and I knew them, but it was not meant to anywhere there and certainly did not mean to be, I, I did not mean, I mean to be out of step at all.
This isn't directed strictly at your, your conversation, but we do need to have a policy on what we discuss with our attorneys, as either as individuals, if it's Carp Monk that, if Steve can't remember what he said, can any of us call, because these aren't, Jim does exactly what his profession, if you talk to them, they bill you for an hour. That casual conversation you said you had, that's $165 that you can't remember what you discussed with.
I mean, I'm sorry, I did not realize.
Clarification, they bill you.
By the, I don't think it's a whole hour. I mean, we bill you the amount of time we're talking. Okay, but it's still billable. Yeah. For something he can't remember, and what he said, he was basically just reaching out, asking a question.
There was a letter.
I'm not putting your services at fault, okay? I understand. I have brothers as judges, that's what you did for a living, as attorney for years, okay? I'm just saying council needs to have a policy on what we approach our legal counsel. I have complete faith in Jim and his team, okay? What I don't have faith in is us calling, like a Wild West sort of thing, asking questions without any of us knowing what's going on. We approve the bills. We are stewards of our community dog tax dollars, okay? I, I put no blame on Jim and his firm, okay? The blame is on us.
I mean, I'm, I'm completely sorry about this. I certainly did not realize that while we were just chit-chatting there that I was being billed, and I, I will never talk to council again.
Our attorney or? You're out of money now, buddy.
Well, then I think, I'll just say one last thing, then I think, I think that's what this is getting to. Do we, or should we, or should we not have rules? And I think we're hearing that we should have some rules, some guidelines for us. When is it okay to consult with our attorney? And then what is the standard for us to share what we're talking about with other council members?
It's certainly easier for us if we know who the point of contact is.
Right.
You know, it's, it's not like if somebody comes up and says, hey, what, you know, what about this new statute? We're going to say, yeah, sorry, not talking to you, you know? That's never going to happen. Right. So it really, I mean, it wouldn't make any sense from our standpoint to do that. So, you know, if there is a way to do it, most of the time with our other clients, we deal directly through the administrative, that is, we would, in this case, it'd be the town manager, county administrators, city managers and the like. That's generally, we rarely hear from the elected officials.
See, we didn't know that. That's an interesting discussion, too.
The only thing that, and I will admit, I was subject of scorn on the last month on the bills, but I do have, as a mayor, I do have a few other elected tasks that most councils do, and that is that I, I shall have the power to investigate all acts of the various town officers, members of police, fire public work department, and all other departments, town government, whether elected or appointed. And a lot of these things do involve the attorneys. Two of the bills that were in question involved personnel, and one involved permission that was given to me by the council members to pursue the conversation with you. No, not yet.
Well, first of all, Mayor, that is what the code says, but you should be informing us if you're going to start to take billing hours. Council should be informed whether you call us individually, or you send a mass email to us, in general, what you're going to discuss, okay?
Or if, uh, what's happening afterwards.
Well, if, before you do it, you need to consult with council.
Okay. The bills like that.
We can, because you know what? You do have some powers, which you mentioned there, to investigate the police chief and probably Randy as well, but we have power to approve the bills, and we are stewards of the community. So when we get billing hours and we ask questions, when I ask a question, I expect an answer to that.
And normally when you ask a question in a region, why I'll answer, but the last question you answered was more like a command, and I'm not going to do that. I'm going to answer it, and you're not going to meet afterwards, and I'll be glad to.
You don't have to. It's been two weeks, I still haven't got my answers.
Okay.
I would like for us to come up with a policy to where it goes through.
Who's going to set the policy then? How do we come up with a policy? Who's going to set it? Are we going to do a commission to do it, or are we going to?
I'll be, I'll be happy to serve on that committee. Let's do that. Let's have a little, I mean, let's have a, let's break out a committee.
Yeah.
And I think what Mr. Gwynn noted is very, is an epiphany, actually, is that typically, a very, very high percentage of the time, he's dealing with, you know, he's dealing with the town manager.
Yeah.
The chief appointed official.
Or staff. I mean, you know.
Right, or staff, yeah.
Wayne or Val, or something like that, but we know that they understand that.
I would support.
There's a, an apocryphal story that I'll just tell you that, where that wasn't the case, and they had all the people calling the attorney, I'll just say it front, it wasn't our firm, and they ended up with this huge bill, and nobody knew how it was going to be huge, nobody knew what was going on, because you don't know when one department is calling and the other one isn't. Right, right. From the attorney's standpoint, you know, you have to have some feel for that, and there have been times, not here, where I've said, have you talked about this to the county administrator? Sure, you know, that I'm supposed to be doing this? Yeah. Because you don't want to get walked into something. I, I am happy to share from other clients, bylaws that they have, you know, if you want to use that as a starting point.
Absolutely.
Yeah. You know, they're, and they don't necessarily address the issue you're talking about, but, you know, other things like that, and, and at least give you a format.
Gives us a jumping off, or what sort of policy we need to create, and it also helps you, your attorneys, to know who you need to talk with, or refer them to.
Yeah, I mean, that basically, you know, we, we do, we act at your request.
Right.
We're not out here, you know, just kind of flying loose. I mean, we, we, when we're, when we're asked, we, we respond, so that's.
If council asks that everything get directed through the town manager, then of course, if you get, even if I called you, okay, I would expect that whoever answers, including you, say, hey, have you talked to Randy about this? Can you go meet with him about it and then discuss it and give me a call? That way our town mayor is involved and on the tip and informed about it.
I think that'd be a great way to do it. And I'd like to help you, Mr. Stipes, too.
I won't, but I don't want to be on it. I support that, and I think it's a great idea, and I want to also say that Mr. Gwynn and his firm, whether it's his firm or a different firm, but Mr. Gwynn's firm as an example, is still, I think, is the way to go from, on an annual basis, about $80,000 we're paying for services. The county attorney for Montgomery County makes about three times that, so we get a very good value, and I'm not, and whether it's.
What?
Yes. But whether it's Mr. Gwynn and his firm or a different firm, but I'm, I just want to make that, I think we get a good value, but we need to have some rules, and that would avoid some of the unpleasantness, you know, and some of the tension that we have is, or, you know, just recently, but I would support if we inform the committee to look at that, or the suggested policy, some rules for that.
I'd like to appoint Monsieur Walter, Mr. Collins, and Mr. Bishop to sit on that committee.
I would like to make one more.
Another question?
Well, you know, I think it's, I think that you maybe want to know a little bit about me, and I want to know a little bit about you, and periodically, I think it's nice to just talk a little bit, just to, you know, just to get an idea of, you know, what you're dealing with, with me, and I have an idea with you, and maybe your firm can do an open house once a year or something like that. No, but you know, in front of, I don't see why a dollar should be connected to every word said.
It isn't, and I think, Steve, if you, if you went back and looked at it, what you would see is you would probably see point two or point three for your question, and you might have been there a half hour shooting a bull on other things with Mark, and that's generally the way that works. I'm pretty sure staff would tell you the same thing. If we end up talking about, you know, the ballgame or something like that, that doesn't show up in the bill. I mean, it's, we, we'd like to think that we are savvy enough and veteran enough to know what's appropriate under those circumstances.
And I'm actually glad we had this in open session like this, you know, and it maybe did avoid a closed session. I don't know. We still have an open agenda, is that still necessary?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Monsieur Walter?
Is that the vice mayor news?
Yes, sir. Did you allow to be reading, please?
Well, I have a regular.
Now, that's what I'm confused about.
But I don't have the, the necessary information.
You have the chart, you have the code of the subject matter.
I moved that the town council entered into a closed meeting as stipulated in the agenda, what is not.
There is, it was, there was a meeting.
Why do we need it now?
I don't.
It was amended.
Why do we need it?
Okay, okay. I'm good.
Hey, Steve, hold on a second. Hey, Marissa, I do appreciate you wanting to be on the closed session, but a lot of discussion, or some of the discussion that we had, I'm appeased, and I would like to defer any, any further discussion for services to, to our committee, if that's okay with you, and we're going into closed session. So I withdraw my.
I would support that.
There we go.
I feel better about that. I don't think so, because we never formally entered into the closed session.
No, you're fine.
All right, so now.
And I appreciate that.
Staff reports, town manager.
Didn't really have anything other than I was going to ask you about planning commission interviews.
I think we got that was pretty much 22. Mr. Attorney? Any other questions like that?
Pretty sure not.
Any other staff members? I do know that Mr. Tweedy has given us a copy of the final budget.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other council reports? I will lead it off and say that, and I think most of you have seen the comments, the Fourth of July celebration was fabulous. There was a great turnout downtown. It's hard to, unless you sell tickets, but it's, you know, we, I think that during the day, there was easily 4,000 to 5,000 people down there. I know that the hydration station this council manned gave away over 1,000 bottles of water, and it seemed to be very appreciated. Fireworks were excellent. I will say that last week, the, I don't know whether it was the running Times or whether it was Montgomery News Messenger did a steady survey on how much money the various municipalities spent on their fireworks. I think Radford was 29,000, Roanoke was like 21 or 22,000, Christiansburg was 14,000, and I found out lately, recently, that the Radford City fireworks are donated by an individual. So, and I think the bang for the buck that we got off of these, I'd support it, maybe spend a little bit more money and have a real big green, but I think the whole thing was 14,000, and it went, went well. Ms. Sacks?
I have nothing further.
Steve?
No.
The rental agreement for the stage, is that coming to council?
I can put it as council discussion item if you like.
I would rather have a work session on it, because there's some things that I don't agree with, or I need to find out a little bit more about, and I like our.
Yeah, I understand.
I know. Like our legal council should attend as well, since this is our, they are our.
Have you talked to parks and recreation people, or are you just pulling this out?
Well.
Have you talked to parks and recreation people about the, the stage?
We've read the, we've read the emails from Randy about the.
I've seen the pictures.
The possible renting of it, and that's where we stand at this point, I believe. That's what you're saying, if what we do, we don't want to.
Well, or, but you do, we, I think council should at least have some input on the rental agreement or non, and certain guidelines to that.
I usually am respectful of other council members wanting to have, you know, support their request for a meeting. I don't think it warrants a work session. I mean, I respect it, I don't think it warrants a work session. I've talked to Randy about it, and I'm on the fence. I can be convinced either way it's a good idea or a bad idea. I'll tell you real briefly where I'm at. I think the staff knows the concerns we have, they're, they're being creative and innovative with what they're trying to do, and I think it should be given a pilot, you know, give it a pilot opportunity to see how it goes and see if it's taken good care of. But regardless, this is my opinion, I just don't think that it warrants a work session or so, but if majority council wants to have a work session about the stage, we'll do it, but I just, I don't want to have a work session just about that.
I would like to, because I, everything I've heard, I can't support as it says.
We can, we can have a voluntary work session if you want, if someone wants to run.
A voluntary work session, I like that.
I think all of the work sessions.
Well, you weren't much, well, you hadn't sent love out of the everybody yet.
I would, I would accept one before council meeting. It's just, I don't know how soon you want, obviously you want it before August.
Yes.
If we could have a short one before meeting, then that would be fine. Maybe have one.
The 23rd meeting, maybe six, six thirty, is that long enough discussion?
Anything we could, anything we could do after the planning commission interviews?
That, well, yeah.
Twenty seconds, that's the one.
Discussion, follow that off.
We can schedule it for seven, thirty-ish.
We'll have somebody here.
Before the meeting, we know it's going to be limited to half an hour.
Yeah, that's how you meet.
I said, I vote for Tuesday, I vote for Tuesday before the meeting. At six o'clock is fine.
As long as we have a draft rental agreement and we can wait.
You have a chance to review.
I don't think we need legal counsel here until, unless there's something we want you to send back to Jim and his team.
You usually write most of your. You usually write most, or your firm writes most of our rental agreements and contracts anyway?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, then we can weigh in on it without them here, then we can present it back to them.
Sure. Mr. Bishop?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Collins?
I'd just like to say, I bet the stage, I thank him and the other five members of council, I approved it.
Say again?
Never mind.
He's been back in there.
That's what I'm saying.
So what have we decided now on the stage?
We have a work session.
I want that, give it one later.
Any other business to come before council yesterday?
One additional item, I just mentioned the retreat, it looks like we're probably looking, waiting into fall through, kind of as a recommendation from a couple of council members, just for holiday schedule, or I guess summer scheduling.
Okay. Anything else? We are adjourned.